He asked me what yours was, so I sent him your contact.
Well, because he, he texts me individually and I'm like, well, this is weird.
So I do, so I.
That's what it was.
You know what, I'm gonna just add you to that contact.
Yeah, cuz I got laughing.
Cuz the one that he sent, I'm just gonna add you guys, you, you to it.
Well, I think you're on it.
I was on it.
Yeah, you're on it.
I'll just add you to it. Uh, let's see, the one that Jed sent.
Jed sent.
Let me see, I don't know if it adds it to everybody?
No, he said.
So he was like.
Yeah, he texts me and he's like, hey Jed, and I'm like, yeah, hi Jed. Hey, that's why he said, hey Jed. Okay, so he didn't fill me in on all that. Hmm.
Too bad. He's sick, eh?
I know.
Ugh, it's okay.
Career surprises.
Six thirty, but it gets darker like five fifteen.
Oh, well, you know.
Recording in progress.
Are you feeling better? Did it go through your family?
Uh, so I, it turned out it was something really different.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Are you okay?
No.
Oh shit, I am so sorry.
Not contagious, so that's a good thing.
No, I don't even care. I have two grandkids, so I.
But it's. I really wish he was here.
Me too. I, when he said I won't be here, I just was like, my heart dropped going, oh my gosh. But. I know, we tell him like, are you kidding me? Really? This is what you chose and. And then I, I was like, oh.
On an island down here.
There's literally something going to drive me nuts.
Luigi and Jed are on Zoom, so plus a whole bunch of people, you can't ever see them.
Okay.
Um, so we need to make sure that we're.
Okay. So would it be better if I do like a roll call on the votes for them? Okay. Did you check and see if they could hear us? Okay?
Well, that's what it.
Hey Jed, will you, uh, talk into your computer and let us know if you can hear us or not? Luigi, can you hear us?
I'll text Jed.
I got him. Jed or Luigi, can you hear us?
They can see but they can't hear. That's not good. Now see if they can hear.
Who's te- who you texting? Can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear.
Oh, there you go. Perfect.
So I guess you can hear about me now.
Yep, we got you. Thank you.
Perfect.
Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, we can hear you Jed and Luigi.
Okay.
I can hear you too Luigi.
Ready to go? Ready to go? Okay. All right, it is six thirty. It's time to call this, uh, city council meeting to order tonight, the twenty first day of November. Welcome everybody that's here and welcome all of those in Zoom land. And, uh, we'll get started with a pledge of allegiance. Uh, I'll lead that and then, um, Councilman Povero, give us a word of prayer, a moment of silence. Thank you. Everybody please stand and remove your cover.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a moment of silence for all our military personnel. Thank you. You know, there's something about a moment of silence, this is very relaxing. Thank you, everybody. Um, next item is approval of the minutes for November seventh. Anybody see any corrections?
Just that Jared Ma is really popular cuz his name's presented twice, right after planning commission?
Oh.
With that correction, I move that we approve the minutes from November seventh meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so with Jed and Luigi, I'm gonna give you guys a, a roll call, just so that we get each of ya. So, Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilman Penanzio?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, public comments. Uh, public comments is not for the item further down on the agenda tonight. So if anybody has anything to discuss other than, um, the consent for residency of the mayor, please come forward. Just give us your name and address, please.
Yep. Uh, so I am Chase Standor and my address is twenty nine fifty west, twenty two hundred north here in Plain City. Um, so I'm here tonight out of a lot of frustration, um, particularly with, uh, the city and the way that I've been treated for the last year. Uh, mayor's aware of it, Diane's aware of it, council members aren't, um, but let's kinda rewind to give a refresher. So, um, last fall I had a DADU approved next door to me. Um, I did not think that it was right and met the code for that process. And so I have been bringing that to the attention of Trent, uh, Dan, and the mayor as well. Uh, Mayor, you came to my house in January. We went in my backyard. I looked at it and I showed you where I did not think it met that requirement. Um, you agreed. You said that you would look into it. I didn't hear back from you. I never heard back from anybody else from the city. Um, understandably so, you're busy. Uh, so I went ahead and I came down, I did a records request. Um, was able to get that, uh, the application. I looked it over. Uh, there were problems with the application. First off, there isn't an application that, an official application that exists with the city. And so a lot of the requirements, they're not met or they're just looked over. Uh, so with this application, there were false statements on this application, making it invalid. Um, I was also able to get the measurements and prove that this was not in compliance with city code. Um, so then I made a packet. I printed all of this off. I provided the calculations and everything. I came and I provided it back to Trent. Um, not to Trent, sorry. I provided it to the office. Um, Trent wasn't sure if he received it. I'm not sure. He hasn't gotten back to me on that. Anyway, this was all, this was all back in, this was all back in, uh, the beginning of the year, March, April timeframe. Um, so anyway, so I, I, I went through that and I, I, I talked with Trent. I've, I've told him that that did not meet that. Um, he informed me that that application had been verified by a city employee and that it did meet the requirements. Um, I checked with that city employee and they've said that that is not a true statement, that they did not tell him that that met that requirement. Um, a lot of he said, she said. So that's why I came here tonight was because I want to get this addressed. Um, um, in the last six weeks, I have called Trent three times. One time I did catch him in the office. Was able to talk with him. He was supposed to get back to me. Uh, the last two times I was only able to leave a message for him. So needless to say, I've been down here probably half a dozen times over the last year. I've probably made more than a dozen phone calls over the last year. And I haven't got this resolved, so. Um, like I said, I submitted it. I proved that this application, first off, the application had false statements. It does not meet code, um, and nothing's being done about this. So, uh, I'm gonna say this, it's probably gonna make some people mad, but I've been told by city members that, that you have been directing them to not enforce code on this, um, property.
Nope.
So, like I said, a lot of he said, she said, and so I'm not.
I haven't said a word and I have not seen that packet either.
Okay, and I, I will be happy to, uh, in the next week, I will, I will print it off and bring it back down again.
Give me a call, stop by your house.
I made sure and even had him record the time, the date that I dropped it off, when I dropped it off to the gal. Um, so, uh, I.
No, I appreciate that.
Um, so, uh, so my, my, my concern is, or what I would like to know, kind of the questions that I have to ask here, is, is this the precedence that the city's gonna set that we're going to allow somebody that doesn't meet code to violate that? Um, they've made false statements on the, on an official government application. That's perjury. Are, are we gonna allow that?
Um, no.
So, like I said, I'm not, I wanted to bring it to attention because I've been trying, uh, as diplomatically as possible to just handle this with phone calls and coming down here. And I have not got any action, so I wanted to raise awareness of it, um, you know. There's not much comment back to that, I know. Um, and hopefully that you'll take this, you'll look into it, uh, and we can get this settled. Like I said, I have all the paperwork. I have all the packet. I have the calculations. I have everything figured out. It's already taken care of, so, and I'll be, I'll be, uh, providing that, if not tomorrow, Monday.
Okay. Will you, uh, send me a text with your name so I've got your number?
Yep.
More current?
Yep, definitely will.
And just so you know also, if you ever do feel like you're getting the runaround, you can contact the mayor directly. And also on the website, the city website, there's a contact city council members. You can contact any of us directly if you feel like you're getting the runaround and any of us, if you don't feel like you're getting from one of us, go to the next one and someone will help you.
No, I've, and I've been, I've been very vocal and involved with this, uh, back when it was going through planning commission and everything, so it's.
Just so you know, it's the first time I'm hearing from it, so contact council member Bill.
No, and I, uh, I, I understand everybody has time. They get busy, they forget, um, so I'm not holding anyone to call for not returning my calls or doing that. I'm just, uh, sharing my frustrations as well. So hopefully we can make some changes and get that taken care of. Okay?
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? All right, moving on. Uh, planning commission report. We got a few of you.
Yeah, but I'm.
Are you the guy?
Honors.
You're the lucky one?
I'd like to follow up with the previous comments here regarding the ADU, the detached accessory dwelling units. Uh, this was discussed in our last planning commission meeting and we are looking to amend that ordinance. Uh, we've had some input from, and we've had some additional information. And what we're looking at is being able to like, uh, any existing, converting any existing garages or outbuildings. Uh, being able to be used is that as long as they meet code. And the issue too is they also require a permit to get that. So we are addressing, looking at, uh, trying to amend the issues by that, so. Uh, we also had a public hearing to amend agricultural zones, one in, uh, particularly what we looked at was setbacks for the accessory buildings. Uh, initially, right now they're at one foot. We're looking to make them all consistent with the others, so it's five foot. So we're just changing that ordinance and that was recommended to be sent to the city council. So you should have that. Uh, when we also had Brindley Acres, uh, that's on North Plain City Road. Uh, they were there for thinking there was gonna get final. On our agenda showed preliminary. But, uh, but we found out they do not have a will serve letter from Bonavista. So that's what we're waiting for, for, from Brindley Acres. So, uh, that was it. It was pretty short meeting. So you have any questions or comments?
I don't.
So if you do have the amendment, that, how does that apply to anything that's going on right now though? Uh, will they just have to?
Oh, on the DADU?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that would be branding now, so we'd have to refer to, you know, how that would affect.
How would that, um, affect existing structures?
As far as if you change the requirements to convert them to an ADU, is that the question?
Yeah, so the thing is though, is a lot of these, um, detached, just shops, right? They were built on a three foot setback, right?
Right.
Any, anything before, when did we pass that? Last year? Um, those would have been built on a three foot setback, so the five foot wouldn't work for any existing shops to be turned into a DADU.
Yeah, so that's what I was gonna say. You'd have to, they have to either meet code or you're gonna have to amend the code so that they can. There'd be perhaps a variety of different issues, setbacks being one, maybe how they're built, maybe how they're wired, I don't know.
Yeah.
But unless you alter the code to adjust for that, then there'll be some that wouldn't be able to be retrofitted to meet the code. You know what I mean? So it may be a, it may be a several step process. You may pass an amendment to allow the repurposing of already existing structures and then it may come up down the line. Okay, well, here's another issue we're finding. And you have to address it later, but those are some things that come to mind, the setback for long.
Sure. Okay.
All right.
Well, that's all for you guys to figure out before it gets to us, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm gonna make a quick comment on that.
Mm-hmm.
So one, one thing.
You're gonna have to come up to the mic.
So one thing to consider with that is when we amend them, this particular DADU was built knowing the code, refusing to follow it.
Sure.
So they had no intention from following it from the beginning, um, because of the lack of process, they were able to slip through something. So if you amend it and you allow something that doesn't meet code through, you're rewarding somebody that in this case.
Totally agree.
Did it with the intention to not follow it from the beginning.
Yeah.
Just something to be considered, especially with the planning commission.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a quick, uh, presentation, um, Dan and Carrie about some, uh, UDOT roads and Plain City roads kind of a swap.
Council members, it's good to be with you tonight. I apologize that you've had to hear from me twice in the last little while. But I just, uh, I'm, I'm assuming, um, that we just have a few minutes, so we'll be really short with this. And I appreciate Dan, uh, being here as my backup team today. Um, first of all, um, I'm, I was hoping to verify that we got a check in the mail from the state, from our last appropriation. I'm assuming that that did happen. Okay, perfect. That's always a, a.
Go, go check, reimburse.
Reimber- yeah, reimbursement, okay. So, um.
Yeah, give me what I need.
Is that just an echo?
No, it's, it's somebody on Zoom. Hey, if you're on Zoom, could you please mute your, yourself, please?
And just, okay, and just while they're doing that, I'll just keep going for a minute. Um, for the benefit of those who are here that didn't understand what I just mentioned, um, we were successful in, in securing a, another legislative appropriation, uh, for six hundred, six hundred or six fifty, six, 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 six hundred and fifty thousand to go towards reimbursement to the sewer plant. So we're up to, uh, a little over a million and a half in, in those legislative appropriations over the last year and a half. We're excited about that, um, helping the community to, uh, to be able to, uh, not bear the entire burden of, of some of these projects and it's been, it's been working out really well. So along with my responsibilities, uh, with the legislature, uh, we do, um, we, we work on policy issues that come up from time to time that affect the city. And in this particular case, um, working with UDOT, I was approached by, uh, the mayor and, and Dan a little while ago with the concept, um, that, that, you know, there's, uh, the UDOT pattern through Plain City is a little bit, um, you know, from their perspective awkward as to what, uh, what, uh, transportation patterns UDOT maintains through the city.
Can I interrupt for a minute? Who are you talking to at the U, at UDOT?
I'm talking to both, uh, the region director.
Which is?
Um, just lost his name.
His name, Dan?
Just lost it, but also.
Three guys have lost his name.
Also Carl, Carlos Berseras at the headquarters. Yep. And so, um, when I, when I say that, so originally this was brought to me as a proposal, you know, something to look at from the city. But as you may or may not know, the Utah Department of Transportation cannot accept trade, do anything, um, on a state or they can't accept liability to the state system without, uh, legislation. So it requires the legislation, you can work out an agreement, whatever, but it requires legislation to authorize the state to accept a liability. So we just can't give a road to UDOT, right? They're gonna go through a process and say, well, what's it gonna cost us? You know, what are we gonna do with it? So on and so forth. And so we approached them with this concern and basically if you can see the map behind me, um, you can see, um, I'm looking, if I'm at the bottom of the map, looking north, forty seven hundred west, runs along the bottom of, of the street or the bottom of the map here. Currently, the state road, and this is a little different than the map I'm looking at. Forty seven hundred west is the state road that continues to the end of forty seven hundred west. If you can drop the map down just a little bit now.
Other way.
No, sorry, other, other down. Turns right on, um.
Twenty two hundred.
Forty two hundred.
Twenty two.
Twenty two.
Sorry, twenty two hundred north, left again on forty two seventy five west and then right on twenty six hundred and connects.
I thought it was, it goes to forty three fifty.
Goes to forty three fifty.
Is that just the wrong number on my map? Okay, yeah, not.
So you go to forty three fifty and then through town and then up.
And then up on twenty six hundred, okay?
That's the current state road.
That's the current, that's the current state road.
Correct. So who wants to change?
So we, me and Dan have talked about this for a couple of years.
Uh-huh.
And it, it would behoove us to just have the downtown area as our roads. Um, we have to apply for permits every year, multiple times. Um, we got five Ks, we've got the Fourth of July, we've got multiple occasions that we have to close the roads down. And, yeah, I mean, all sorts of times we've gotta get state permits, right? And so what we've done is just turned right at Fremont on nineteen seventy five and headed east to thirty six hundred, which that road will be under construction next year, right? Cut across and UDOT, when we were in the truck and driving this, they want connectivity, right? They wanna be able to keep their dump trucks moving, keep the trucks moving, right? And so that would keep the connectivity to twenty seven hundred and we would take from forty one hundred west on twenty six hundred as our city road. And so we, they, that, they don't like coming downtown and making all these turns and, I mean.
That depends on who you ask, but yeah.
Yeah. I mean, when we were talking to him, that's what he said too. This is very weird. And obviously he hasn't been out here and driven these roads.
No.
And so, but anyway, in, in discussions with him, he thought this would be a good route and a, and a good trade for us, so.
So, Councilwoman, um, I, in, in answer to your former question, I just found my email chain, it's Rob White is his name.
Yep.
The region director, he's the new, that's why I couldn't remember because he is fairly new to this region. Um, his staff is mainly the same, but he's been, I think he's been here a year and a half, uh, something like that, so he's not been around forever. Um, that's the region one director. The office is out of Bognan. So, basically, um, council members, I, I, I just wanna remind you, this is why we're here. Like I, I didn't, we haven't proceeded with, to make any commitments to, with UDOT. Um, I, I was asked to look into this, engage in discussions with UDOT and see what their thoughts were. And because of that, they have done some research. They've come out and driven the road with us. And we've had some basic, high level conversation about how we should move forward. If we decide, if the city and you as the governing body of the city decide to move forward with any kind of a trade or any kind of arrangement with UDOT, we would then, we would get more serious about how we were going to do that. It would have to ha- happen like I've said through legislation. So we would likely work out an agreement in principle with the region office that then would be ratified by the Salt Lake office. And then, uh, or into some kind of legislative. Legislative session is coming up. Um, the timing is good if we so choose to pull the trigger. Um, and there's also opportunity, uh, for us to wait and make sure we get it exactly right. I will say this, in conversations with them now over the last few months, um, the mayor is absolutely correct. They are not happy with the traffic pattern either. They, they hate the stop signs, the, the turn, the sharp, you know, the sharp turns, the kind of the jog and zigzag through, zigzag through downtown. Um, they were more than excited to look for an alternate route. The mo- their, their concerns and their discussion have been a little bit more, um, like what kind of road are we taking on, right? What, what, what's the quality, the makeup, the, um, uh, constitution of the roads that we've been taking on? And it is my understanding from Dan that, that in, uh, some of these, uh, in the proposal or one of the proposals of what they might want to take on, that there's actually, you're actually in the process of completing a road project as we speak, which sweetens the pot for them quite a bit because again, they're taking, they would be taking a road that, that has recently been worked on. And, and that they wouldn't have to do a lot of maintenance on to get it started and get it traded. So that's the reason I'm here today is just to mention to you all that, um, that this is something that we felt like, I felt like we should, um, have direction from the council before we, uh, moved any further. And, um, I'm here to answer questions if there are any others.
I do have a few questions, I don't know if for you, Carrie, or for Dan, but the things, the thing that I would think about with this so potential swap that I could potentially get behind, um, depending on, you know, how we figured out and what the financial situation is. But that's one of my questions. Financially, what does that look like in terms of the swap? You have a lot of factors there, the road conditions that you mentioned. I know that we're doing a project on, um, thirty six hundred, which is where this road would be going, which would actually benefit UDOT, right? Not the city. Um, and then also with that current project, so what would that mean on the current, uh, state route? What we would, what would we have to do as a city for the, for the UDOT to find it equitable on their side? And then again, the conditions. So there's, there's all those things that I hope we're looking at and I'm sure you are, Dan, but let's make sure we're looking into all those before you bring it back to us. But it does make sense. The route makes sense and UDOT is in the business of moving traffic. And the straight routes, less stop signs, that's absolutely what they're looking for, so, but I wanna make sure it's equitable for the city.
Thank you.
Can I respond to that?
Hey, uh.
Jed has a question.
Go ahead, Jed.
Okay, yep. Councilman Jenkins, um, my concern, my major concern here is that, uh, we have an elementary school there on that road. Uh, that's a, that's a big concern for me, that the traffic pattern around that school is already terrible. I worry that it'll just get much worse. I worry that it'll just get much worse and much more dangerous.
And that's a good point, I was thinking that too. How is it going to affect traffic patterns long term and looking at those things like the schools and things like that, so.
Those are all considerations that you should take into account. I will, I will just mention, Councilman Favero, as far as fun, money, exchange, any exchange of money, my experience has been that I've never seen that happen. They're more looking to trade mile for mile, and sometimes they'll take more mile, road miles, with the understanding that they're, that they're increasing connectivity, right? And I think that might be a little bit what you see here. There's actually more road mile that we would be giving to them than they would be giving to us. They're very, they're very careful about taking on something that, that they don't think is a good deal for them.
Right.
And we should be the same, right? And so I've never seen, it's kind of interesting. This has been a fun memory because twenty years ago, when I was first elected to legislature, this was kind of the thing I, the first thing I cut my teeth on, this type of thing. I had a mayor from Marriott Sladeville that called me up and said, I can't stand all the trucks getting off of the freeway in my city, and I want you to make the UDOT, make UDOT take this road. And I opened a bill file, and it, it was a very, a very interesting learning experience. So this is something that I, that I've actually dealt with and, and understand. And, you know, again, they, they really wanna connect, connect the dots and connect people. I'm not, I'm not sure how they would perceive something like a street in front of a school, whether they would actually, I'm assuming they would treat that with extreme care as well, speed limits and those kind of things. But again, those are considerations that we might wanna consider spelling out in detail when we, if we get to the point of signing, inking a deal with them, that those are, that we want certain things to happen on a, on the state road.
They have control at that point. And to my point about the financials, it's not necessarily an exchange of money per se, but just the condition of the road and what it's gonna cost. Are we gonna take on a road that's worn out versus a brand new road that we're giving back to them is all.
Absolutely.
Just those things to look at.
Yep, very well said. Any others?
No, Jed talked about the school, and that was my big issue, is that road right now is dangerous.
Yeah. And the way I see it is you look at Far West Elementary. They make it work on the same highway as it is right now, the same state road, right? It works better than what we have in Plain City, but our road is quite a bit smaller than what that road is in front of Far West. I just, I worry about, you know, parents trying to park to pick up their kids. I don't know, it's, it's, it doesn't look good from here.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely talk through all these with the director and, and bring more information. But I just wanted to bring it to the body and let you start thinking about stuff.
And when there's conversation, if council can be involved?
Um, we'll, we'll just, we'll just get more information and bring back and keep you up to speed where we're at. Like I said, we first talked about this probably two and a half years ago, Dan and I. And it, you know, we both kinda looked at each other wondering how we were gonna do this. And now with Kerry in, in his role, makes it a lot smoother and easier for us to get that moving.
Bug in the air.
Yeah.
So I'm.
Knowing the process.
Council members, I'm here to facilitate a process that meets your goals as the governing body of the city, right? And, you know, I think it's appropriate for me to, you know, as directed, look at opportunities, report to you what I think the, the realities, the, you know, the, the reality on the ground is to what, you know, and give you good advice as to how that may move forward. But you can be, you can be confident that I recognize that I don't speak for the city and that any, any progress that we make on, on projects like this will be simply to recommend to the governing body what I think makes sense and how we can accomplish that through a process. And I, I look forward to hearing more from you as you think through this. I just thought that it was important to get this in front of you, you know, make sure that, that the council was aware and could get behind something, you know, a concept like this. After that, frankly, the devil is in the details, right? And that's where we start to work out the tough stuff, but.
How soon would we need to get this into a bill? If we pushed for it to get done this year or to be in a bill this year, what would we be looking at?
It's possible. I would say, timing wise, with the legislative session just around the corner, we just had our last interim week yesterday and today, Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. The legislature will, they're still very engaged throughout December, throughout the mid, mid, mid-December with the budgeting process as they kinda hash out the base budget and how that's gonna look. But bill fire, files are getting open fast and furious right now. Last year, bills that were not in the queue before December had a hard time getting drafted because of the backlog in the drafting process, so.
More than likely, we're looking at next year anyway then.
Well, unless, unless this is, unless you have a quick and strong, and that's the other reason I wanted to bring it up now, is if you have a strong position that you'd like to move forward, we can easily, you know, get a box, what we call a box car opened, where that means that we have a vehicle in place that can move this discussion if we want it to. We can continue the negotiation process. I will say in fairness to Mr. White at UDOT, that his preference is to take a little bit more time on this. And, and, and I think that's, that's a fair thing to, to say, so.
That is one thing he said, he wanted to see the thirty six hundred project completed before.
He wants to know, he wants to know exactly what he's getting after the project is, is complete. So that was part of what I wanted to do today, was gauge the, the, the level of, of commitment and, and see if it's something. I mean, again, I just need you to know that if we don't move forward with some kind of a box car in the next few weeks, then we won't likely have an opportunity for another year to close the deal. Now, we, there's a lot to be done in the meantime, and we'll still be working on it. But we won't be able to close the deal until another legislative session.
Yeah. And we, we did this as a presentation, not as a motion, because I don't want you guys to make a spur of the moment decision on something that you're just getting up to speed on, so that's why we just did it as a presentation. So we can discuss it at a, again, next meeting if you'd like, or we can kick the can to the new year, so. Whatever, whatever you guys decide. We can, we can talk about that later.
If anyone's got questions or feedback or input, who should they contact to get more info? Would it be Rob White? Would it be?
No, it'd be Dan or I, or Kerry.
It would be Dan or Kerry? So just send them Dan's way.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I would, I would say that having one point of contact to Rob is probably a good.
Yeah.
They get confused really quick.
I was about to say the same thing.
Different voices in those state agencies, but obviously you're, you know, you guys can pick up the phone call whoever you want. But that's, that's my suggestion.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, any questions, comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Oh, I did have a quick question, as long as I've got you here.
Absolutely.
Any, um, did you have any movement on the question I had the last time we talked about the parks?
So to, to let the public know, after our last meeting, when I presented here, Councilwoman Bill asked me about looking into some handicapped, some, some assistance for some handicapped accessible.
Adaptive parks.
Parks. And, you know, the same, the answer that I gave you then still is true, but, but I'll explain that a little bit. It's, it's really tough to get legislative appropriations for parks. It's, it's really, really tough because there's so many agencies out there, and I think the legislature's kind of been of the, of the opinion that if we, if we open that door, it's something that, that never closes. I, I've kind of verified, I mean, that's the, that's a general stance that they have, I've kind of verified that in this particular case. You know, we've been very successful, as you, as I mentioned before, on, you know, water projects, sewer projects, infrastructure, things like that, transportation. I think there has been a mentality that, that those kind of projects or some, that you can, you can assign some kind of a regional benefit, right, that, that then becomes a state nexus. It's pretty tough with the, it's pretty tough with the park. The only hope that I could give you on a park is the fact that there aren't very many of that nature, right? Park of that nature, it would be somewhat different, and it could become a community, or, sorry, a regional asset of some kind. And so I think it's still worth, you know, looking into it, but if I had to give you my, if I had to give you my professional opinion, it's gonna be a tough lift to do anything in the park space.
Thanks for looking into it. Like I said, it's always worth the ask, right?
Yes. And, and my guess, my guess, and I know you're all familiar with the ramp process, but my, it feels like that's probably the best angle for something.
I figured as long as I had you in front of me, I'd ask.
And, and he'll know more as appropriations start happening through the legislative session, right? If there's gonna be some money in a rec program or, or parks or something where, where he could, you know, get our interest in there, so.
Snatch it up for us.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yep, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is the release of a restriction on Lot one thirteen of Diamond E subdivision. When we approved this subdivision, I don't know, year and a half, two years ago or so, we put a restriction on one thirteen as a temporary turnaround for our fire trucks. What they've done, and I think it's spelled out very well and with the map, that they've connected phase one to phase two with sixteen, fifteen feet of asphalt on the Our Future Road twenty eight hundred north, so that Dan can plow that, and he will as he comes through the subdivisions. And phase two is paved already, and it's, they're, they're starting to build in phase two right now. And so that will just be a, a loop that he goes. The yellow on the map shows you the safe walkway to schools for kids. Takes them down to, I'm not sure what that next road is, but that's where they can get to that crosswalk as well. So we needed a safe pathway to schools, and we got, needed a, a good turnaround to release that. And now with that connecting to that, we, we have everything we need, I feel, to, to release Lot one thirteen.
And I'd just like to get it on record, from Dan too. On record.
What's that?
On, on record.
What do you want him to say?
That this is safe, everything's good.
Oh, I'm releasing the, the lot, what was it?
The restriction that it meets all.
We need to have that released, so they can build on it, last lot. You know, it, it, it becomes a major concern in a subdivision when you have one final lot at the end of the street because it becomes a public dumping ground. And then at that point, then all of a sudden I got neighbors, residents calling me going, hey, this, people are dumping garbage here. You know, we, we found some good washer and dryers once in a while, but, you know, like I said, it's, it's a, no, it, it, it becomes a public dumping ground, and it makes it harder to, you know, for cleaning up that lot and everything else.
Yeah, we, we worked through with Brandon on this as well. To make sure that it met all of our, our stuff.
I think, I feel, it's like, I want, I know.
It, it, okay, we know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right.
We, we know this'll work and, and.
I, I, I know this will work because now it'll keep the kids off of twenty six hundred walking across that canal.
Okay.
Because there's no safe place to walk, it puts them out.
They've got maybe, maybe eighteen inches between the white line and the canal right there. And so this, this gives them a safe walk path and. And which, we, we actually had residents from that subdivision, I don't know if they came here, if they just made phone calls, but I, I've had a couple call me for sure and say, hey, how are we gonna get our kids to school? Right? So now we've provided that and, and met that, so.
So do we have any discussion?
The concern we had had, the reason it came here in the first place is flat itself, has a note on there that says, cannot release it without your approval. And so then we did do a meeting with the mayor and Dan and, and Fire Marshal as well. And council member.
Yeah, we thought it was gonna be an easy.
Looked at it, and this, this takes care of all the concerns.
Thank you, Diane, for.
All right.
Two thousand and twenty-two's minutes, because.
Any, any comments or questions from Councilman Penuzzio or Jenkins?
Nope, I haven't any.
Okay. All right, I think we're ready for a motion.
I, I move to remove the release of the restriction on Lot one thirteen of the Diamond E Phase One subdivision.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Penuzzio?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you. All right. So now we got final acceptance of Sunset Meadows Phase Two. Can we lump these together and do Phase Two and Three? Seems how the engineer letter and Dan's letter are exactly the same.
Yeah, I noticed. Hey, the two and the three are different.
Yeah. The letters say the same thing, so.
Can we lump it together legally?
Or we can, but we've done it before.
You can legally.
All right, I'm, I'm just gonna do it together. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the final acceptance of Sunset Meadows Phase Two and Phase Three.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Penuzzio?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. All right, so before we go into the public comment for the residency requirement for mayor, I would like the city attorney to just kind of brush over what and why we're here for that.
Yeah, no problem. So the, so state code dictates. I'll move right into it, yeah. So state code dictates and governs eligibility and residency requirements for all elected officials, and that's in ten dash three dash three oh one is where that is in the state code. And so one of the provisions in there talks about any elected official can have a secondary residence and stay at that secondary residence for up to a continuous period of twelve months if legislative body approves that, and then also approves the length of time. So it can be up to a continuous residence of twelve months. To be able to do that, you do have to have a meeting such as this, you have to allow for some public comment on the topic, and then the council votes. Another one of the requirements is you've got to come in and, and do this prior to, well, you can stay at a secondary residence, let me say it this way, up to a continuous period of sixty days before you come in and ask for it. So there's not a whole lot of other guidance in the code, other than that, as far as definitions related to establishment of a secondary residence. There's not a lot of guidance related to, you know, continuous residence up to, up to sixty days, other than just the verbiage of that continuous residence up to sixty days means, I think, what it means. So that's, that's why we're here. We've got a request for consent from the city council to allow the mayor to reside at a secondary residence, which, again, that's the first part of the consideration. And then the second part would be if that is gonna be allowed, for what amount of time? It can be up to a continuous period of twelve months. So that's, I guess, the background, unless there's any questions on that for me.
To get a little personal, when did the second residence start?
And that I don't know, I haven't done an investigation. I'm not, you know, in, in my role, I don't see it as an investigation role. I can tell you what the law says, but that's the purpose of our meeting here.
Well, the twelve months, if we approved it, would start from that.
From, from that point.
The sixty days.
Correct.
Or whenever.
Right, and that's correct. And so that would be something you would have to determine. I don't, I just don't know that, that date, but you are correct. You are correct. Any approval would have to start as of that establishment of the secondary residence, and then it could go twelve months from that period, so.
Well, it's my understanding that there was a conversation between yourself, the mayor, and Diane a while ago regarding this, so can we go from that date?
There's been multiple. And I don't even, I don't even know the dates.
Because in conversation with you, you're the one that mentioned that you had.
Yes.
Seeked counsel, so I'm just saying, when was that day? I mean.
Well, I think it depend, like, I don't, you could, but it depends on the establishment of secondary residence, not necessarily when there's a conversation about it, so.
Well, I think the conversation was about the secondary residence and that he was living there. Was that not the case? And if so, you probably would have records of that.
I don't have it with, I don't, I didn't write down when the conversation wa, if that's the question, I don't have an exact date with me, so.
You got a month?
No, actually.
Okay.
Interesting.
That was my question, so if we wanna.
Okay, so.
Real quick, so is the worry there, the sixty days is what I think you're getting at? Working?
It's been more than sixty days.
So, I will say that we discussed this prior to me being in one place. Um, every discussion I've had with the city attorney and Diane has been prior to an action. Right, because I don't just make unilateral decisions in this seat without talking to somebody. And, I mean, I, I think Brandon can attest to how many times we've discussed multiple issues on the phone and especially something of this importance, right? Um, I don't even know what day I would say I established residency, but I could probably dig it up. It was somewhere the middle to end of September. Have I been out of Plain City before? Yes. Had I established anything that I would consider a residence? No.
And I would say our conversation would have been, and again, I don't have it from memory before that, it would have been summertime. Okay, but I don't have a date, I didn't write that down, so.
Well, I have the Plain City code that basically says that if you are out of the city living during your term of office, that the office is automatically vacated.
So the Plain City code in in one dash five dash one, it it does mirror the state code in that regard, too. In paragraph E, it talks about if an elected official.
Right.
Establishes a principal place of residence outside the city during the term, then it automatically vacates. And there's a, there's a similar provision in that same state code, ten three three oh one.
I have that, too.
Talks about, uh, that's an establishment of a principal place, so slightly different.
Right.
Than that issue.
What do you consider a second residency?
The definition, they have a definition in that same ten dash three dash three oh one. Secondary residence means a place where an individual resides other than the individual's principal place residence. So, that would be the best definition I could offer.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
Not right now, I'd like to hear from the public.
Okay, so we'll open up the public comments, um, I'm not gonna set a timer or nothing, but let's try to keep comments to around three minutes. Uh, just state your name and address and we'll go into public comments.
Miles Robinson, twenty nine eighty-three West, twenty six hundred North. The way I read this code, the first day out of town, you're, it, you're, lose your spot. If, and then also it says, uh, on that sixty days, permission of the city council. Not the attorney, not the. And the way I read the spot where twelve months, that was pertaining to military. And I could be wrong, I'm not an attorney. But these are the things I've read. And what concerns me is if we throw this out, it's a code violation because it was not mentioned the first day he went out, that means he's gone. If you throw this code out, you just as well throw the whole city book out. We've got codes here that aren't met, we gotta discuss. We gotta have this for everyone across the board. I don't care if you're well-liked, you're not liked, the law is the law. So, thank you.
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question to that? Can you reference, sorry, can you reference the code you're speaking of?
Yes. Three E, let's see, two zero A dash two dash one oh five. And also three dash three oh one. This is, this is on the qualifications for a mayor on the Plain City. I looked up Plain City mayor qualifications. And this, this also goes for the city council, mayor and city council, chapter five.
All right, thank you.
Victoria Nielsen, twenty nine. Victoria Nielsen, twenty nine eleven West, North Plain City Road. Um, I feel mayor that, that you should resign. And as we've discussed, we had the Utah State Code as well as the ordinance of Plain City. And when we run for mayor, we know that we have to be a resident and we have to maintain our residence. Um, if this, uh, request is approved by the council, I think that we are setting up a precedence. And the next time that this could happen, it could be somebody that wants to run for mayor of Plain City that doesn't live in Plain City. And when you say, no, you can't do that, they say, well, you've set a precedence, why can't I? So, that's why I feel that I, regardless of, you know, your circumstances, I don't know, don't care. It is, you know, you made that decision to move and you know what the ordinance of Plain City said in the state code. And that's why I feel like you should resign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Linda Youngell, forty sixty-four West, twenty two hundred North, no, no, sorry, twenty four seventy-five North in Plain City. And mine isn't so much as a statement, just but a question. If you guys, the council allows this, um, who will be signing the documents and stuff, the official documents? Will it be the mayor pro tem? And who is the mayor pro tem?
Judge Jenkins.
And.
He's on Zoom right now.
He's on Zoom tonight.
He's not here, okay, that's just my only question.
Brian Masters, sixteen eighty-two North, forty four hundred West. I just have one request, can we get some smaller writing on the, uh, minutes and agenda? I don't think it's small enough, Diane, I'm just, anyway, sorry. Um, I have a couple of questions, if I could, please, what's that? I have some, they're at home, I forgot them. I usually have them on top of my head, but I probably could borrow some buddies.
Hey, you only got three minutes.
All right, I'm getting on to it. I just have a couple of questions, um, really quickly. Does the statute talk about permanent residence or is it just a residence? And are we applying that to vacations if he leaves according to what was just said? If he is leaving on vacation, get out, John. That's not, you know, that's, that's gotta have something in the, in the information that addresses that issue, am I right?
Do you want me to answer or?
Sure.
Okay, yeah, so in my view, the way I read it, it talks about being gone for a continuous period of sixty days for one of the, for, it could be for one of those reasons, right? You go on vacation for three weeks or four months. I don't think you. So, yeah, there's all ki, the way the code is written is try, is trying to cover all situations, so it's not that specific.
Okay, and the other part of my question was, you know, does it speak of establishing a permanent residence?
There's various parts to it, so if you establish a, a primary residence somewhere else.
Primary residence, okay.
Right, so there, it does speak to that as well.
Okay, are you establishing a primary residence outside of?
No.
Plain City? Okay, um, I'm here, very honestly, in defense of John. Um, I obviously think, I mean, I've looked at that statute, I wanted to hear from the attorney, uh, and find out, and those are the questions that I had. Permanent residency, is that an issue? Um, and how do they handle vacations? You know, I'm, obviously, there's, there's some issues here that probably need some clarification. Um, in my job, I deal a lot with municipalities, Diane can probably attest to that, I, I deal with a lot of different people. Um, I think John has done an excellent job, um, doing his job. Have I always agreed with you? No, but I don't have to either. I think John does a great job of doing what he feels is, you know, a better or best issue, um, of honoring our past, um, managing our present and preparing for our future. I mean, I, just tonight, I'm here and I'm listening to him, you've got your pulse on the city, um, he knows what's going on, he knows what the issues are. Um, I want to follow the statute as well, and that's why I wanted clarification. Um, and I think that we, you know, go by that clarification, if we're gonna follow that law, let's follow the letter of it and figure out, he hasn't established a permanent residence outside of Plain City. Um, there's issues with, you know, the, the, uh, description or definition of how many days. I mean, one day, that's obviously an issue, you know, because it doesn't address vacations or whatnot. And I think those would be need to, would need to be addressed before we go taking an action that would put, I believe, put Plain City at a deficit in operating and running this town. Um, and so he has my support as far as that, again, just like the people here, most of the people here have mentioned that have come up. I do want that statute followed, but let's make sure we're very clear on that statute before any dis, before any decisions are made. Um, let's make sure that we're very clear on how that is impacting your personal life, doesn't matter. But the issue is, let's clarify those things before those things are are brought up. So, that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
I'd like to clarify what he's saying, so what he's talking about, to clarify what you're saying is actually addressed in ten point three dash three oh one, section five B I I. It doesn't say anything about a permanent residence, it says a resident resides at a secondary residence. That's what this is all based upon, not a primary residence, just to clarify.
So, just that he's residing per, is it permanent, does it say anything about permanent residency?
No, that's where the Brandon explained the sixty days.
Sixty days, how long is it, so Sep, end of September?
Somewhere in there, I'm gonna have to.
Okay, so that's something to take into consideration as well. Um, I think with the service that he's rendered to the city, I think we give him an opportunity to clarify and see where he, where this is at and get really, really in the nitty-gritty of making sure that we're doing the right thing. And I think that would, that would warrant additional time and opportunity to, uh, to review that information before you make a decision. As far as, you know, kicking you out immediately, resigning immediately, I think that would be a disservice to the statute as well as to Plain City, thank you.
Jeff Hells, I reside at fifty-one, fifty-three fifty-five West, twenty-one fifty, uh, North here in Plain City, been here for forty-five years. I just wanna echo a little bit about, uh, what Brian Masters said. About this is all determined by codes. Codes, dates, that are critical. Uh, Mayor Beasley and I haven't always seen eye to eye, we've bashed heads a few times. And there's been days I wish the hell he lived somewhere else. But it was because he was representing the city the very best he could, and I was representing my client the very best I could. So, he's always looked out for the city, he's always watched carefully what's happened in the city, and I've admired that. John is a third or fourth generation resident here in Plain City. His grandfather, Ruland and Doris Chug, and his parents, Jim and Carol Jean, are pillars and statues and staples in this community. Just their mere existence has made this a better place, let alone what they've actually done here in the city. We elected John the first time because we thought he'd do a good job. We elected him the second time because he did do a good job. So it's my recommendation that John stay in as mayor. And then let him prove to you as a council and to himself that by not living in the city, that he can't do the job. Then if he can't do the job, then, John, you need to resign. And if you, as a city council, don't think he's doing the job, then you ask him to resign. But for the time being, we hear this code, we hear that code, we hearing these codes about it. The jury's still out, the verdict's still out about that. So, we need to find out what code, and if there's a violation of the code, the dates, and then you, as a council, then decide. But I want you to consider the value of what John's been to this city, how he's helped the city. All of these things need to be taken into consideration. I fully understand and I agree with the value of following the codes. I have not heard anything tonight that tells me any code here that would tell me that he needs to leave. So until then, my recommendation is, is to let him stay, finish honorably, and do the best job he can, which I know he will, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Lisa Cox, twenty forty-one North, thirty-nine hundred West in Plain City. And I had something written down, and I'm gonna talk about that because I don't know about the codes, didn't check into them. And I'm gonna cry because I know John. And I've been to several council meetings over the last six, seven years. And there's nobody that cares about this city, honestly, than John, that cares more about this city. I, I truly believe that. Um, he has gone out of his way, time after time, for residence. He has double-checked on things, he's spent so much time for this city. And I just, I just feel like we oughta look at that and give him a chance if everything is code perfect. Um, he is a true blue-born Plain Cityite. And I love him, and I just think that he's done a fabulous job, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Mark Loether, fifty thirty-nine West, fifty hundred North here in Plain City. Uh, there's been a lot of talk about codes, I think the code's been explained really well. There's a provision in the code for the city council to allow the mayor to stay in place for up to twelve months or I guess some variation of that sixty-day thing. To be honest with you, when John was first made mayor, I didn't like John. Uh, didn't really know John either, though. I've gone, gotten to know John very well, uh, as a resident, he's always answered my phone calls or called me right back. If there's been a concern in my area of the city, he's come over and taken a look for it for himself. And I think he's a valuable asset. Uh, I don't think there's any confusion personally with the code, I think the code spells out that it's in the city council's hands. It's up to you to decide whether you want to allow it or not, but the provision's quite clear, we're not violating any law or any statute by allowing him to stay as long as we go through this process that we're discussing right now. And as a citizen, I would like to see the mayor stay.
Thank you. I did just look through my text and it was the twenty-fourth of September.
Get my glasses on, so I can be, getting old sucks. Uh, good evening, uh, my name is Josh Abelman and I reside at forty-one fifty-eight West. Uh, I'm a third-generation Plain City resident, uh, and I'm here tonight regarding the issue of consent for residency of mayor. I've known Mayor Beasley for twenty-five years, give or take, and although we have not always agreed on matters within the city, we've always been able to have civil discussions, it's which most have ended with us agreeing to disagree, uh, even though I was right. With that being said, I do believe that mayor has always made decisions based on what he believed was in the best interest of the city, even though he was wrong. Uh, over the last seven years, the mayor's always been readily available when I've had questions that needed to be answered, and I don't see that being a problem for the remaining year of his term. When I became aware of this issue at hand, uh, thanks to a concerned citizen who obviously had the community's best interest in mind, posted on social media, I reached out to the mayor. After our conversation, it is my understanding that the mayor's current. that the mayor's current living conditions are temporary while he and his family deal with some private personal matters. He also informed me that he is still performing all of his official duties as mayor and intends to, intends to continue performing his official duties as mayor. Uh, according to Utah Code ten-three-three oh one subsection six, uh, you as the council have the authority to grant consent for the mayor to reside at a secondary residence outside the district that the elected officer represents while still maintaining principal place of residence within the district for a continuous period of up to one year during the off- officer's term of office. Uh, as we all know, nobody's life is perfect, and, uh, we all experience situations that are less than desirable. I would hope as a council, you are able to look back on the mayor's last seven years and, uh, the years even before becoming mayor and take into consideration all that he and his family have sacrificed to try and make this city a better place for us as citizens. Uh, as a lifetime resident of this city, I am in total support of granting consent for the mayor to temporarily reside outside of the city while he and his family deal with their private personal matters. I feel that it will not have any negative effect on the city or...
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ben Gertz. I live at twenty-nine sixty-three, thirty-three hundred west in Plain City. I guess for me, the important question is the timeline of things. Like, are we looking like a year, two years, six months? I think that's a really important part of the consideration.
Um, I'm asking for twelve months, not knowing exactly how long it might be.
So, twelve months, starting now, or twelve months from the end of September?
It's, it would be from the...
That'd be from when that was established, yeah. To be clear, you can't, you can't go beyond a twelve months total.
Yeah, so it, it would be September twenty-fourth.
All right, thank you. That's okay with everybody? All right.
State your name and where you live, but yeah.
My name is Brian O'Pikens. I live in West Weber on forty-seven hundred west, six-six-eight north, forty-seven hundred west. Um, I did live in Plain City for ten years with my family when we first got married. Um, I met John ten years ago, um, when my wife and I still lived in Plain City. We sold him a little trailer, and, uh, he hated it. And we had butted heads for a long time after that trailer. It wasn't up to his standards. Um, had a love-hate relationship for a few years after that due to my constant criticism of Plain City and the potential new Kansas market at the time. In twenty-seventeen, Beasley decided to run for mayor of Plain City. Uh, that's about the same time mine and my family moved out, which made it possible for him to win because I would've won otherwise. Um, with that being said, I teased him and asked him, "Why in the hell would you wanna run for mayor in a city that knows everything about you? It's social suicide, and if you run, your critics will eat you alive with old stories, some true and some false." Uh, Beez responded that he didn't care. Uh, his intention was to serve the city that raised him and that he loved and that loved him. Um, as a close family friend now of him and his wife and all their kids, um, uh, even though I don't live in Plain City anymore, I promise you that John's intentions are still one hundred percent the same. He only serves as your mayor for one reason, and that's because he loves Plain City and that city that raised him. Um, I've spent a time, I've spent a ti- spent a ti- ah, my heck, I can't talk. I spent a ton of time with Beez hunting, uh, working, messing around with goats, um, hanging out with other people. And, uh, there's never been a time or a location that we've been that he has, that his being your mayor hasn't been his number-one priority. And that's why I feel it's appropriate for me to get up here as an outsider and say that because as an outsider, I can see, even though when he's outside of your city, he's still one hundred percent committed to the mayor duties of Plain City. Um, I don't really have a say in the codes and, in any of this at all, but I just want you guys to know that your mayor cares about you as a city. And that's his number-one, well, family's his number-one priority, and second is his, is this job of being your mayor, so. And, uh, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Robert Seeger, uh, twenty-one fifty-five north, thirty-five hundred west. Um, I'm not a real good public speaker, and, uh, John's succeeding, put me on the spot a few times about fire trucks and everything that we're, we're working on. But, uh, uh, on the serious matter with, with the ordinances and everything, I don't think anything deceptive's going on with it, with the timelines and that. I, I know you have to follow the ordinances and the timelines, but, uh, as far as the, the personal character thing, uh, I've known John for a long time, and we've had our issues when, when our kids were younger and stuff. And, uh, I think he's always put the city first, and I, I think that's his main concern. And I, I believe that even if he's temporarily residing outside here, I don't think he'll be out for very long. I think he'll be back, and, and, uh, he's a lifelong Plain Cityite, and a Plain City boy, as he, he self-proclaimed, and I think he is. And, uh, I appreciate everything he's done and all of you have done for the city. And, uh, I hope we can resolve this and, and keep him in place and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Todd Skeen, I live at forty-four sixty-seven west, twenty-three fifty north. How many years lived in Plain City, longer than sixty-six years?
Almost.
Then you children, be quiet and pay attention.
You're not even close.
I don't talk much. There's a reason why, because I'm not a good public speaker. I sat on the council with John. Everything that he's done has been for the city. Now, I agree, we have to obey statutes, rules, and regulations. I don't think anything that's under the table is going on here. I don't think anybody's trying to pull anything. And I think that John's done a great job in the city. I think you guys should make sure that we're following the law to the letter, of course. But some of these things, I wonder if might be politically motivated. This is a gotcha moment. That quite frankly upsets me and makes me embarrassed for the, some of the people in the city. But, that being said, John's always done a great job, in my opinion. I've been here sixty-six years, know his father very well. Thank goodness I never had to appear in court before him because I know he's mean and he's tough if you cross the line. But, uh, that's my two cents. I'd like you people to give him the consideration that he deserves and think about that before you make your choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Are we, as Plain City members, able to discuss our comments over Zoom?
Yes. My name is Nicole McCafferty. I reside at twenty-nine thirty-five north, thirty-three fifty north. I agree with everybody that has talked before me. I believe that if John can fulfill his duties as mayor while having a second residency, he should be able to. John has also volunteered with the fire department here in Plain City. Um, he has helped my child out more times than I can think of. He also helped advocate for her when Weber Fire came in and would not, and followed up after our emergency. I agree with, sorry, I don't remember the last guy who was just talking, stated that he has our best interest at heart and that it is politically motivated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in Zoom land wish to comment? I'm used to looking at the TV because it used to be on the TV. Okay. Anybody else here? Last call. All right. We will move to motion to consent for residency of the mayor.
... amongst us.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, Brandon?
Yes.
We approve it. It goes for twelve months. Then what happens from September to December?
Well, that would be up to the mayor, right? If he doesn't come back to Plain City, then that timeframe runs, and you can't, you can't extend it.
Exactly. So, what do you guys...
So, he's either, yeah, to answer the question better, he would either have to come back here to reside, or you're gonna have to fulfill that spot. That's the way I read it.
So Jed would step in. Jed would then appoint a person to fill the council seat. Does it have to be filled?
Yeah, well, that's, so let me speak to that then. So, it depends...
Yeah, I think that's what she was asking.
Yeah, so, so when a vacancy, and this goes for any city council member or the mayor, right? So, if somebody resigns or otherwise vacates in office, uh, within thirty days, you have to have a meeting to actually appoint somebody. Now, in between that time, you're correct, the mayor pro tem, or you could have motioned to vote somebody to take that spot during the interim. But by thirty days out from the vacation or the resignation, you've got to vote to appoint somebody to fill the remaining term within fourteen days, don't quote me on this, but within fourteen days or fourteen days before the hearing, you basically put out an advertisement to say, "Anybody interested in the, in the spot? Send your information in." And then you have an election. We've done it before. It's been a few years. We had a council member...
Seven years ago.
Yeah, so we had a council member resign, and we did this where we put out an announcement. A few people put in that they wanted, were interested. And then we had, I can't remember if we had an, a questionnaire that they filled out in advance or not, or they just showed up.
They just did a letter of interest.
Yeah, okay. So, then they showed up to the meeting, they were interviewed by the council, and then there was a vote. You can do various rounds of voting. Uh, matter of fact, I read about Vineyard, the, yesterday. They just barely filled a city council spot by this method. And they had like twenty-five people apply, so they had various, various rounds of voting. But anyway, just to cut to your question, that's how it works. Like, if this, there's a vacation or resignation, you gotta follow that off, that process. And the, the state's pretty strict on that. If you don't, if you don't fill that within the thirty days, then you're supposed to file a report with the Lieutenant Governor's Office, and then I assume they come and do it for you. But that's, that's what you do. So, in this case, i- if, if you were to give this extension that whenever it runs out or before that, the mayor would have to be back here living or, I mean, whatever you wanna call it, a resignation or a forced vacation of it. And then you've got to fill the spot.
So Jed, as the temporary, he takes over the position if he doesn't come back or if he takes over now? He, he would fill the mayor position until the end of John's original term?
To cover that more clearly, what would happen is, let's, let's just imagine the resignation happens on, on day one or whatever, right? You have thirty days to vote to fill that spot, in this case, to, to fill the remainder of the term. Okay? In the interim, from day one to day twenty-five or whatever, y- you have to vote, just by majority vote, to appoint somebody among your own body to fill that. So, it might be the mayor pro tem or whatever, just fills that spot until you actually appoint somebody to fill the rest of it, so. It could be the same person if you end up voting for that same person again. But anyway, you're always gonna have a ma- and that's for the mayor position.
So whoever fills the mayor position loses their council position?
Yes.
If, now, now, not for the, so again, this might begin confusing, but from, until you have the election, let's call it an election, right? To fill the remainder of the term. If you make a motion to have Jed, for example, fill that role until that election, he does not lose his council spot. He's just filling in until you make that vote.
So the person who we appoint to fill his position is just a placeholder?
So, the word appoint, you were gonna, so again, I'm probably making this more...
Okay.
There's two processes, right?
Because I'm, I'm, Mike, I guess a question for you is, okay, we extend you for twelve months. Are you thinking on coming back?
Yes.
Could it be shorter than twelve months?
Very much so. There's a possibility for March, first of March.
Oh, I was thinking like tomorrow, but...
Could it, could I go and live at my mother's house? Yes. I could do that tomorrow. Would I do that to my parents? No. I mean, I, if, if the council wanted me to move back tomorrow, I could. Let's put it that way.
Well, I don't think that this is a question of if John is a good person or if John has done his job. I don't think that has any merit in any of the decisions that will be made from here on out, according to his living situation. But I, I've, don't have the dates that you're talking about.
I, I'm willing to go on the September twenty-fourth date that he found. And that puts within the sixty days.
And I'm going back to July or August when the move actually happened. It just wasn't established a second residency.
And to that effect, looking at the state code that are ordinance references, which is twenty A dash two dash one oh five, deter- determining residency, um, seven C. And an individual does not lose the individual's principal place of residence until the individual establishes another principal place of residence. Have you established another principal place of residence?
I wouldn't call it home, but I do lay my head somewhere.
So it's not an official principal place of residence? So you have not officially established a new principal place of residence yet?
Yeah, but I'll go back to one comment I made, and I, sorry, I forget your name, but it's not talking about the principal place. It's talking about the second.
Yeah.
That's how the code is written, if, and I've heard a lot tonight about the code, and let's follow the code. So if we're following the code, let's please be consistent with the code.
Sounds like it's kind of contradictory, though. Like, this, he hasn't lost his principal, but he does have a secondary. Is that where we're...
Right.
Still has his principal, but he's at a secondary.
Because based on definition, his principal place of, of, um, excuse me, of residency would be the home you lived at in Plain City, right? I'm gonna believe it's still in your name and things. The second one would be where you're residing, where you're laying your head at night, right? And that is clear in the code, um, ten-three, uh, three oh one. But I would like to say a few things if...
Please.
Um, real quick, and then I'll talk more details. But I, I wanna, first and foremost, thank everybody. Um, this has been a fun process for this body. I'm sure it's been a fun process for all of you to think about it in the last few days or however long people have known about it. Um, and I wanna thank people for not personally attacking anybody tonight. Um, that to me means a lot. Um, and I wanna also say that this body has done a very good job of being professional. Um, I think the word was gotcha moment. I didn't feel that from up here, and I still don't. Um, I think what we're looking at here for me is when I chose to run for this seat, I wanted to be ethical, honest, and do it with integrity, and I'm not about to lose that. And that's what I heard from a lot of you tonight, was following the code. And that's why I say, if we're gonna follow the code, let's be consistent. So, to me, we keep going back to this date. The date is the key, right? Um, if, if you wanna follow the code, the, that, that date is the key. The sixty days is the key, and then also talking about how long out we wanna extend it, whether or not that is to extend it the full twelve months. So per John, your date would be the twenty-fourth of September? No, my, my's dead. There we go. It'd be September twenty-fourth of twenty-five if we choose to extend it the year. Um, if not, again, I think Rachel mentioned this, and, and we talked about it, that would not get you through your terms, but you have intentions of coming back in May. Um, to me, a compromise would be something like that, right? To have you back, because there is residents here that address their concerns about having you here in the city, which I would agree, and a lot of the people that I've talked to in the last few days would agree with that. That doesn't mean that we don't like John personally. That doesn't mean we need to get into his personal business. It's none of our business, uh, what each of us are doing when we're at home, right? As long as it's not illegal, obviously, but... So, I, I, again, appreciate that, but I think that's a compromise. And Jan, I think you alluded to that. If you can come back sooner than the twelve months, that's where I'm sitting on all of this. Because I, and I will say this, the, the little bit of interaction and, and, and obviously, it's been a year almost, but, so I haven't had a lot of time to work with John. I've, I've appreciated working with you.
Go out the front door!
Sorry, what did I say? Uh, so, so some of the things that were said tonight, yes, absolutely. And I think we do need to keep that in mind, but again, let's follow the code. And, and I think, I believe it was Jeff that said, "Let's see what he can do outside," because as of right now, there's no proof that he can't do it. But to compromise, I think we need to get you back in the city as quick as we can. That's where I stand.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Councilman Jenkins here. I would agree with what Adam and Rachel have talked about. If we establish the date of September 24th, I guess, this is, that's, that date has been brought up. There's nobody, it sounds like we can't argue that. So we could just set that date as, that date moving forward. My comment also is, can John do it? Can he be a mayor? Has he been able to? I don't know who's there in the room exactly, but as far as all the council members, I am by far the closest neighbor to John. I can look out my back window and see John. And to be honest, I'd look over to his house, I'd pass his house, if I pass his driveway. His truck is in his driveway so often that I didn't even know he was living outside of town, until just recently. I don't know when that date was that I became aware, but he obviously is able to be mayor from outside of town. But going back to that date, if we select September 24th and just did the year, assuming that he is planning, I mean, the, the fact that we're debating primary or secondary residence would assume that we are expecting or hoping that he would come back and make a primary residence in Plain City. So we have to assume that. Anyways, that's, those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, Brandon, let's say we extended it for six months.
I knew that question was coming.
And, and he, and he did come back in March, and then for some reason, left again.
Oh, I didn't know that one was coming, okay. So you cut, so you're saying, say that, I guess, so you extended six months.
He came, he came and, and then in July, he left again.
Well, let, let me put it this way, the code doesn't specifically get into that stuff, but what it does do is gives you absolute discretion whether to grant this stuff or not. Whether to grant this stuff or not, and I would think that kinda stuff would play into your opinion if it were requested again. Like if he, he, he goes, he comes back, he's gone again, asking for, you know what I mean? I think the, the best answer that I would have would be that's up to your discretion then whether you would grant that. And you, it, it's hard for me to speculate whether you would or wouldn't, I, I don't know, but that would be up to you guys to make that decision.
Can you, I know we're throwing September 24th, but Jan's got a different num- date in her head. Is there a way for you to go back, you to definitely 100% go back and confirm? You're 100% sure?
100% sure.
Because I know the date you guys talked and the date you actually physically moved are two different things.
The date I physically moved is different than September 24th, but I hadn't established anything. There was nothing established.
And the initial, I had, I talked to.
Established second residence as opposed to just being out of the city.
Yeah, and, and so to that point, and I didn't mean to seem too vague earlier, but I, I talked to the mayor so often on the telephone, and I talked to him and Diane frankly on the telephone almost every week, which I think is a good thing. But I, I talked to them so much, I can't tell you like, oh, it was on this day. I mean, I know it was hot, I was in my car, it was summer, but I don't, even if I looked back to try to figure it out, there's, there's gonna be so many calls between me and the mayor, or me and the mayor and Diane, there's no way for me to figure it out. And I, I hesitate to be the, you know, the investigator trying to run around, figure out where people were sleeping, I, I don't think that's a good way to go. I think you go with what you're being told, that's the best way you can make that decision.
One other thing, if this happened back in September, why are we not hearing about it until now?
The first time I heard as far as like, what do we do, put it on the agenda, was when we did it, so. So that, I don't know the answer to that. I do know, if that's the date we're talking about, I do know that we're within the 60-day window, so I don't know.
Right.
Did it matters ultimately, but I don't know. As I've read this thing, just one more point, as I've read this thing over the last couple of weeks, I mean, there's, and maybe it was put together this way by design by the legislature, it probably was, because I think they intended for the legislative body to have the discretion to make these decisions, and I don't think they wanna micromanage you too much. But you can read through this and see all kinds of weird scenarios, just like Councilmember Bill mentioned, you know, where a person moves out, moves back, moves out, moves back. But my guess is they figured the stopgap to that would be the legislative body itself saying, you know what, that's not gonna, that's, that's not gonna work, so. But I agree with you, you could read this and say, you know, gee, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go there, I'm gonna come back, I'm gonna go there and come back, but ultimately, you would have to decide, you know, that's not gonna work, so.
I also think we would've got different public comment if that was happening with.
Yes, I agree.
About a motion? Do we have to do two separate motions, Brandon?
Well, it, it could be the same motion, but it could be in two parts, or you could split it. I mean, you gotta decide two things, whether you give consent, and then what the length of time is going to be. So whether you wanna do that, that would be up to you, or whether you wanna do that in two parts or one. It, it's not illegal to do it as one, but you could split it into two if you want.
All right, this is Councilman Jenkins. I, at this time, would like to make a motion to approve the, the extension of, you know, this, I'd say 12 months, and for a good time, I've, I don't know, unless there's some discussion, I'd just start it at September 24th, 2024.
Can I add an amendment to that, since he opened it up? I would suggest we put a timeframe on to get John back in the city sooner, rather than later, just so we can have a good compromise.
So you wanna, you wanna make it not 12 months, you wanna make it more like six, or?
Or less.
Or?
I mean, he mentioned March.
What's the issue with putting it at 12 months?
Yeah. I just think if he's gonna be the mayor of the city, he can make arrangements to be back in the city less than 12 months. That's my opinion.
Well, and to your, to your question, Luigi, was it Luigi? Sorry, I didn't, was it Luigi?
Yeah.
Your question, we've had members of the audience with their concerns of not liking their mayor to live outside of the city, so it's just a compromise if we get him back in the city as soon as we can, then those residents, at least from what I heard from their comments, would be okay with it.
And he thinks he can get a place in March, so if we said April 26th, that's seven months from Sep-, or, April 24th, that's seven months from September 24th. So he can say seven months? Wh- when in March?
Just put the date on it.
So that's March, March 20?
Or whatever you want.
March 24th?
Whatever we want, we'll put December 1st, John.
Yeah, right in the middle.
Let me get through the winner. Do April 24th.
So what happens if he?
Okay, so just, just a second, just to clarify, Brandon, we had a motion for 12 days. He asked for an amendment, or 12 months, I mean, 12 days.
It's like, wow.
Yeah.
You really are getting back.
Somebody's moving quick. How, tell me how this motion, should we entertain that motion as it was, or accept the amendment? Or should we just?
Yeah, I mean.
How do we?
Yeah, so good ques- so the motion was to allow the consent of the secondary residence for 12 months. There was never a second there, and there was.
There was a.
To amend it to a different timeframe.
His motion opened the door up and said unless you wanna discuss the timeframe.
So we didn't really land on the timeframe, that I don't think there was really a consent on that.
There was never a second, so there was.
So.
No.
Okay.
Another way to do it.
I'm just making sure, I just wanted to negate.
No, yeah.
Another way to do, another way to do it might be going back to that other concept of splitting this into two motions.
Right.
Like have a motion to allow consent or not, and then ha- and then you can vote on that, and then have a second motion related to time, if you wanna do that.
Councilman Jenkins, to simplify this, would you like your motion to be amended to just the consent?
Well, I was gonna say seven months to, you know, because I thought what Rachel said was fair, but we could change it so that we're just voting on consent. That, that's fine, yes.
At least we get that part done.
Okay, we'll get that one out of the way. All right, do we have a second on the consent?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes, aye.
Councilman Penuzzio?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to extend your stay of absence until, was it April 24th?
Yep.
We have a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Penuzzio?
Aye.
And?
Nope.
Aye.
Okay. All right, motion passes four to one. Thank you, and that was difficult for everybody, I'm sure. All right, um, business licenses, I didn't see any. Right? Okay. Pay the bills.
I didn't see any of those either.
We'll just ask if you do go out in the foyer, just to keep your voices down, it echoes in here pretty good.
Is the IT support, the Magna 5, 642, is that the SD rights?
That's every month.
It is. It is not.
It's turned on here.
No, that's a, that's an every month, our IT.
So what's the SD?
Um, United Security.
Uh, I have that here. I, I was gonna talk to you.
Oh, okay.
Um, he gave us a bill for $5,990.
So it was?
Better than the eight.
Than what we had out?
Yeah. Eight thousand, 700.
Yeah, I actually talked to him today, and he said that those first ones were 2,800, not the 22 that I thought it was. So, that's why it's less.
That's why it's less.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Do we have any discussion on the bills?
I have one other one, but I just didn't know exactly what to do with it. So sorry, if we're on trial, we're on trial, I guess.
Or you can just shut the door, either way.
Okay.
She wants us to pay half of a fencing bill, which would be.
Oh, this was, this was the fence.
589, plus, she gave me another one for 1,893.
How much?
Wow. So.
The.
What happened with the?
Yeah, the, so we went halfers on this three-rung fence over here against our parking lot.
Okay.
For Jolene Fulmer. And Robert's actually the one that installed it, so I don't know if you wanna hear from me or anything, but what's, what's the first one?
The first one is for, I don't know, the total was 9,700, 1,001, 9,178 dollars. And she paid half of that.
What was that for?
It's for.
Was that the back fence?
The highway, or, I don't know, I can't read the writing.
Oh, yeah, no, she did not have a fence all the way her, all the way around her yard yet. That's right.
Give him back to me.
Sorry, I'm trying to recall all this.
Still popcorn fencing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Bags of concrete mix.
I don't need it, I don't need to see it, do you need to see it?
The amounts of the amounts, I guess just explain to me what it is, why we're paying.
Right, right, right over here on the corner of the park, there's that one house. And we've, we've fenced everything all the way around. And so when she moved in, she put fence, she's got five or six-foot privacy on the, yeah, six-foot privacy on the backside, and then we did just the three-rung like we've got all the way around on the side. And so, I, I don't know, Dan, do you remember what, what was all that discussion? I remember talking about the three-rung stuff, but the six-foot, I don't have 100% recollection on. Could you call me about the three-rung?
No, I just, the only thing I didn't want her to do is put up chain-linked pants, and then with the vinyl fence, then, like I said, I guess that's the direction.
Cause I know we agreed to go in half on the three-rung stuff, I don't remember going.
For the three-run, because, because that's the one that had the brick that was about three foot? Yeah, and so the brick, you, brick got taken out, and like I said, it could've been the agreement on the, for the back fence that, that.
Yeah.
Park, but the three-run.
Yeah.
Off of that 18, I think that, I was like, I.
I just don't remember that conversation, that's, that's all. Oh, yeah.
Paper airplane back to you.
All right, so do we have any questions on the rest of the warrant register?
No.
Nope.
I'll make a motion to move to approve the warrant register for the dates of 11/1/2024 to 11/20/2024.
Second.
Councilman Penuzzio?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilman Faverro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bill?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Does that include this correction? In his motion?
Yes.
Perfect, yep.
So the 45 plus the 18.
Yes. All right. Council reports, Councilman Penuzzio?
I have nothing to report, I'm sorry, I couldn't be there in person tonight.
No, we understand. Councilman Jenkins?
I will also quote Councilman Penuzzio word for word. Sorry I couldn't be there, and I also have nothing to report.
It's all right, we understand, thank you. Councilman Faverro?
I have nothing to report.
Councilwoman Bill?
Christmas parade, December 7th. Thank you, everyone that came for this. I would like to see if there's any way we can update our ordinance to be very, very clear, so that if anything like this ever comes up again when it comes to residency, there's no discussion, it's a black and white.
Okay.
Please let us update our ordinance.
I would start with you guys.
And stay safe out there.
No?
Stay warm.
All right, Councilwoman Wilson?
Still working on my Dumps Report, so.
Okay.
Hopefully next month.
Okay. Thank you, everybody who came and gave your opinions and spoke. It's not a easy thing to get up and speak, I still struggle after seven years sitting here. But I do appreciate the council and your grace, and I, I swear to, to you guys and to Plain City that I will continue to keep doing my job, and I don't miss phone calls, and, you, you got my word, I'll be here, so. Okay, any other comments? About a motion?
Motion adjourned.
Well, there was three of them. They couldn't say it quick enough, yep. Just pick one for a second.
Second.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, meeting adjourned.
Aye.
Nothing personal.
Exactly.
There's nothing personal, no. I've done this long enough to know. Yes, 100%.
Come back as soon as you can.
I'm trying.
And the thing is, is everything they gave us, nothing said anything about second residence in the, in the packet. It's like, I was looking for second residence. It, it was saying everything about primary, 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 I was like, where's the secondary?
That's the whole, that's the whole state's catch.
But it was all talking about primaries, like, okay, you don't lose your primary if you leave, but I was like, okay, great, I don't care.